Good evening. I will now call this meeting to order. As a point of information, since we are presently without a seated board president, I'll chair this meeting until Agenda Item 6.1, Election of Board President is completed, at which time, our new board president will take the gavel. I do believe we have a quorum, and so I'll introduce our interpreter. Adam Avalos will serve as the Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of the meeting, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of this meeting room. This announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Áram Avalos servirá como intérprete al español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación al español, el ir por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de esta sala de reuniones.
Thank you. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Any member of the public wanting to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda, please fill out the public comment form, the green form located on the table in the back of the room. Please hand the form to Delia Smart, Board Manager, before the item comes up in the agenda. So this would be for this organizational portion of the meeting, and then we'll have public comment again for the regular meeting. So if you wish to make a comment, a public comment on organizational meeting agenda items, please be sure to fill out the card in the back of the room with Delia, and we'll call you at the appropriate time. Members of the public providing comment will use the microphone on the stand in front of the room. Board Manager, do we have any public comment at this time? Thank you. Board Member Jackie Gabey will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise. Ready? So we pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are revisions to the agenda and closure items tonight. The revised meeting handouts for this evening's meeting are Enclosures 9, 12, 15, 19, 20, 21, and 27. We will now move to the second agenda item, Certification of Results of Consolidated District Elections. So truly an exciting night tonight. Welcome to all of our family members, our guests, and others who are here for this great occasion. And so I'll call on our Chief Business Officer Nathan Hernandez to read out the results of our district election.
Well, good evening, Board Members and Superintendent Schrum, family and friends. It's my pleasure this evening to do the certification of election for this year. So we have received the official certificates of election from Michelle Baldwin, Tulare County Registrar of Voters for the Consolidated District Election held on November 8, 2022. It is my honor to be able to affirm the results of that election and announce that Walter Eskamoyen, Trustee Area 1, Paul Belt, Trustee Area 2, Dr. Todd Odo, Trustee Area 4, were each elected for a term of four years to expire on December 11, 2026. Dr. Randy Viegas, Trustee Area 6, was elected for a term of two years to expire on December 13, 2024. Lastly, I'm also honored to announce that Joy M. Naylor, Trustee Area 3, ran unopposed and will serve a term of four years to expire on December 31, 2026. Congratulations to our continuing and newly elected Board of Election Trustees.
Thank you, Nathan. I will now ask Assistant Superintendent Ben Dillon to come down to administer our oath of office. And I would also ask that our newly elected and returning board members, please rise and go to stand in front of the table. You'll see your name on the form. We will administer the oath of office. You will then sign the item. Walter, you're down here on the end.
There you go.
And then we'll reconvene for just a minute, and I'll announce directions for our reception after we do that. So at this time, I will turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent Ben Dillon to administer the oath of office for our new and re-elected board members.
Thank you, Superintendent Schrum. Mr. Belt, Ms. Gomoyen, Ms. Naylor, Dr. Odo, and Dr. Viegas. First, I would just like to express my congratulations to you on your election or reelection and your willingness to serve the students and the families of our school district. It is an honor and a privilege to have the responsibility of administering the ceremony oath of office with you this evening. Following the administration of the oath, in front of you, you will sign the copies of the written oath of office prior to taking your seats. So if you would, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your first and last name.
I, Paul Belt.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
Constitution of the State of California.
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California.
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
without any mental reservations or purposes of evasion.
and that I will well and faithfully discharge
and that I will well and faithfully discharge
the duties upon which I am about to enter.
the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations again, and please, before taking your seats, sign the written oath of office form on the table in front of you.
Please join me in congratulating our new board members. Thank you. At this time, we will call a short recess for our board members to mingle and take photos and just enjoy the moment. We have cookies and punch that are in the back of the room outside the entrance to the boardroom. We will take a 15-minute break, and we will reconvene at 5:25. At this time, I will call us back to order from recess. Want to again congratulate our newly elected and returning board members. Congratulations. Thank you all, members of the public, community, parents, family, members. Thank you for being here for this great moment of recognition. And again, congratulations to all of our board members, especially those that are new and returning and took the oath of office tonight. Look forward to working with you as the superintendent as we continue our work to do what's right for kids, to advance student learning in Visalia Unified. And we all know we have a lot of work ahead of us. And I know we have a dedicated team here that's going to be willing to make those decisions and work together to advance student learning. So we're now going to move to Agenda Item 6.1. I will point out, we're in numerical order by trustee area. We will go through the election cycle for our officers. We will stay seated in this order just for the sake of time. And then we will, of course, go into closed session. During closed session, the DS Dais will be, DS Dais, however you pronounce it, will be rearranged into the new order, back to Alpha, with the Board Clerk, President, and Superintendent in the center. And so, having said that, we'll soon be opening the floor for members to discuss and nominate those interested in being Board President. Board President provides leadership on behalf of the board and the educational community. Some of the duties include presiding over meetings, signing instruments, acts, and orders necessary to carry out state requirements below the Board, representing the district and governance as governance spokesperson in conjunction with the superintendent. And the President has the same rights, including the right to move, second, discuss, and vote as other members. I will continue in this capacity of the meeting until our President is selected, at which point we'll go into nominations for Clerk, and the new President will assume the responsibilities for running the meeting. So then I can sit back. I'm just joking. Let's sit back. Just for a point of order, we have our parliamentarian. Megan will be here if need be to make sure we're on the right track. But just as a reminder for our community and for our Board, once we open up the floor for discussion nominations, if the nomination is made, of course, it has to be seconded. Then we'll call the vote. If there's a majority, then that individual moves, you know, receives that designation. If there is not a second to a motion, of course, with parliamentary orders, that just dies. And then we call for new nominations. If there's a nomination, a second, and not a majority vote, then again, that's a failed motion. And so then we move to additional nominations. All right. So having said that, I will open up the floor. Board, raise your hand if you would like to have a discussion or make a motion. And so...
I don't think it matters.
Okay, discussion, okay.
Um, we, I think that Walter Gomoyen has been excellent as a Board Secretary, and I would like to nominate her to be our next president.
All right, we have a nomination by Megan Salano. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
All right, we have a nomination and a second. Do we have any discussion?
I was just gonna say, serving as our Board Clerk, not as our Board Secretary.
Oh, is that what I said? I'm sorry.
But nonetheless, I just want to say I agree and appreciate the leadership of Trustee Gomoyen during such a tumultuous time and for allowing all of our Board voices to be heard. And I also endorse your leadership, so.
Do we have any additional discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. So all those in favor of Trustee Walter Gomoyen for Board President, please signify by voting. All right, motion carries, seven, zero, with zero absent. So I would like to congratulate our Board President, Walter Gomoyen. Now she gets to put up with me, so. But anyway, congratulations. Thank you for that. I'll continue reading, and then I'll be turning it over to our Board President. We'll move into the election of Clerk. And so at this time, we'll follow the same process. And so I'm going to walk the gavel over to President Gomoyen to call for discussion slash nominations and the vote. And reading the duties.
The duties of the Clerk include certifying and attest to actions taken by the Board when required, maintain records and reports as required by law, sign minutes of Board meetings following their approval, sign documents on behalf of the district as directed by the Board, serving as Presiding Officer at discretion or an absence of the President, perform any other appropriate duties assigned by the Board. The Board President will now open the floor for discussions or nominations for Board Clerk. Joy Naylor.
I'd like to nominate Jackie Gabey. I think that, you know, she's been very active as a delegate and would make an excellent clerk.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Discussion, discussion.
Oh, any discussion?
No, she's gonna be great.
She will be great. You will be great, Mrs. Gabey. Okay. For the vote. I'll come, oh, wrong place. There we go. All right, Clerk, would you like to call the vote?
The vote is seven. Yes, you've done this so well. Now we haven't had to pay attention. Zero nays and zero abstaining.
Thank you.
Microphone.
Turn it over to Superintendent Schrum for the appointment of the Board Secretary.
Thank you, Madam President. Appointment of Secretary of the Board per Board Bylaw 9122. The Board must now take action to appoint the Superintendent to serve as Secretary to the Board. The Secretary to the Board shall be responsible for maintaining an accurate and complete record of all Board proceedings and shall prepare and distribute maintained Board agenda, Board minutes, maintain Board records and documents, conduct official correspondence for the Board as directed by the Board, sign and execute official papers, and perform any other duties as assigned by the Board.
Sir, a call for the motion to appoint Superintendent Schrum as the Secretary of the Board.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote.
And the motion passes, seven, zero, with zero abstentions.
Excuse me?
The vote passes, seven, zero.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch who made the second. So if you could say who made the first and the second.
Paul Belt.
Mr. Belt made the second.
Next item on the agenda is CSBA Delegate Assembly nomination. Superintendent Schrum.
Thank you, Madam President. Board Members. Background summary here. This is a delegate for CSBA. Board Member Randy Viegas is requesting that the Board approve his nomination as a candidate for the CSBA Delegate Assembly, Region 12A. CSBA Delegate Assembly members serve two-year terms. Any Board, School Board Member that is a member of CSBA is eligible to nominate Board Members within their geographical region or subregion. Delegates set the general policy direction and fulfill critical governance roles within the association. They communicate the interests of local Boards to CSBA's Board of Directors, Executive Committee, and staff. Pleased to support this nomination. I know that Dr. Viegas will represent as well, along with a Board Clerk, Jackie Gabey, who is also a delegate. Each region has more than one, and it would just be amazing if Visalia's voice has two delegates at the state level. So, Madam President, I'll turn it back over to you.
Is there a call for a motion to nominate Dr. Viegas to the CSBA Delegate Assembly?
I will motion for Dr. Viegas.
Second.
Okay, motion by Megan K. Spears Saleno, second by Board Member Naylor. Any discussion?
Just want to say thank you. I appreciate your support. I look forward to hopefully representing our region and having a greater voice within California School Board Association Governance. So, thank you all.
And I think you'll do a great job. So thank you. Call for the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously, seven, zero.
Next, we have the approval of authorized signatures for the calendar year. Mr. Hernandez.
Good evening, President Gomoyen and members of the School Board, Nathan Hernandez, Chief Business Officer. And now that the Board has seated the President and Clerk, we have the authorized signers who are approved to sign orders on behalf of the district per Ed. Code 42633. And we've added Walter Gomoyen and Jackie Gabey as President and Clerk along with the district staff who are there to authorize items on behalf of the district.
Is there a motion?
I have a motion to approve.
Second. Dr. Odo? Okay, first was Megan K. Spears Saleno. Second was, give me a little patience here. I'm fumbling a little bit. Second was Dr. Odo. Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have the selection of Board Representative to vote in the 2023 Election of County Committee Members. Superintendent Schrum.
Thank you, Madam President. Board Members, as required by Education Code 4005 and 35023, the Board yearly selects a Board Member to vote on behalf of the school district in electing members to the County Committee on School District Organizations. The responsibility of this representative is to take part in 2023 Election of County Committee Members. I would like to ask our parliamentarian to share just a little additional light on the role of this individual.
Just as stated, the role of the individual is to elect the County Committee. The County Committee on School District Organization takes on a number of different functions, but importantly, addressing if there is a transfer of land or reorganization of land from one school district to another school district. It's something that happens very infrequently, but this is an important function for the Board Member representing the district. Thank you.
Is there anybody that would like to represent us?
Can I ask who did this last year? Do we know who was on that?
I don't. I don't remember having this position.
The representative this year was Joy Naylor.
Oh. Well, since Joy didn't get to vote on anything, I would nominate Joy Naylor. And Randy. Okay. The motion was from Board Member Gabey, second by Board Member Viegas. Is there a call for the vote?
And the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I'd like to ask if there is any public comment on closed session topics.
Oh, eight point four.
Oh, did I do something wrong?
Just skipped.
What did I skip?
Eight point four and eight point five.
I did. I'm, okay. Board Member Meeting Dates, there we go. 2023, 2024 school year. President, I mean Superintendent Schrum.
Thank you, Madam President. Board Members. Pleased to present our meeting dates for 2023, 2024 School Board Meetings. You'll notice a few changes compared to years past. A couple of reasons for this. There are some months where certain items, such as approving the budget by state, require two meetings, one for presentation, of course, first read, second read, and in additional months where we have a lot of personnel matters and other things. Part of our effort this year to present a little bit more of a balanced Board Meeting schedule is to do two things. One, to provide additional time for our staff to do the work they need to do versus continually, constantly preparing for Board Meetings, number one. Number two, we're introducing a series of community trustee town halls. These will occur three times a year. What we've heard from our community is that they want more of an opportunity for interactive dialogue with the Board. And of course, as we know, Board Meetings are meetings of the Board for the Board to conduct business that occur in public and are not necessarily beyond public comment, which is one way, an opportunity that provides a lot of interactive dialogue. So by modifying or presenting this calendar, it presents time for us to schedule these meetings that will be held town hall style by trustee area, and we'll work on announcing those dates. The first one, of course, to occur in the fall. It'll be fall, winter, spring. Because this spring, I'll just, as a sidebar, we'll be having a lot of opportunity with our strategic plan. We'll talk about that in a little bit. So in addition to the town halls, I'd also like to take the moment to remind our Board and our community that this Board is always accessible via email and other, you don't need to wait for a meeting or even the town hall. But I did want to provide a little clarification of why the meeting calendar for the 2023-2024 school year looks a little bit different from this past year.
Is there any questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
I was just gonna say, I appreciate the intentionality about connecting with the public and this engaging and interactive dialogue. One thing that I would ask staff to do as we start developing these town halls is not only developing those town halls with the public, but also with our students, who often, even in those spaces, might feel intimidated to come in and speak. And I just think about a really wonderful event that we had last spring where we had the student voice. And so thinking about how can we be intentional about that and maybe even develop some student town halls at various comprehensive sites and all levels, so. And I'll second the motion.
By Board Member K. Spears Saleno, second by Board Member Viegas. Call for the vote.
The vote, the motion passes unanimously.
Good. Next, we have the Board Representative Committee's committee appointments for 2023. Superintendent Schrum.
Thank you, Madam President. Board Members, you should have an updated list in front of you. I would ask Board Manager Delia Smart, have there been any modifications to the Board Committee signups since beyond the one we have up here?
Superintendent Schrum, there have been no modifications.
Okay, so as you can see by Brown Act and all of that, we can only have three Board Members per different committee to avoid it being agendized in a meeting. So we fall within that parameter on every single one except for Board Policy Committee, Educational Services, Learning and Leadership, of which we have five. So I guess, Madam President, my first thought would be, is there anyone that would like to make a modification to this, or we will then need to roll into a vote?
I will move to HRD and Business.
Okay.
President Gomoyen, I'm willing to move from the hotly contested Educational Services, Learning and Leadership Group to the Superintendent's Office so that I can afford my insight there.
Thank you. We have made those modifications. Again, these are Board Committees or Committees of the District, and we have revolving Board Members to be a part of that. And so now, all of those fit within. Also, before I turn it back over to you, Madam President, to call for approval if there are any more nominations, any more modifications.
So I realize, I think I must have missed the memo that I was also supposed to be on a Board Policy Committee. So I will take with the Business Services operations. That's fine.
Okay, is there any other discussion or questions? And Board Manager, you got those positions?
Well, actually, I was gonna say, if there's availability to serve on the Tulare County School Boards Association, or if that's only limited to two, I'd love to, you know, join if I can make that fit my schedule.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, then. I'm not locked into that. If you want to, I mean, I can. Unless we want to do three, I don't know.
May I make a comment on that?
Please.
So we would need to reach out to Kathy Medros. She is the TC SBA President. Because that is only allowed during their open nomination period. So we need to check on that nomination period to see if they are taking new folks. And then, at the time when they are, then we will go ahead and submit your name.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, call for a motion to accept the Board Committee appointments.
A motion to accept.
Second.
First, by Board Member Naylor, second by Board Member Odo. Call for the vote. There you go. Motion carries. Oh, sorry.
Motion carries unanimously. All day.
And next, we're gonna move into closed session topics. Is there any public comment on closed session topics? Seeing that there is none, the closed topic, the closed session topics are recommended expulsions, recommended reinstatements, recommended review, continued expulsion, public employee assignment reassignment, public discipline dismissal release complaints, conference with labor negotiators, conference with legal counsel, conference with real property negotiators, anticipated litigation. We are close to closed session. Convenient, regular section. I'd like to introduce the interpreter, Adam Avalos, who will serve as the Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of the meeting, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of this room. This announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Áram Avalos servirá como intérprete al español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación al español, el ir por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de esta sala de reuniones.
This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Any member of the public wanting to provide public comment on items listed in tonight's agenda, please fill out the public comment form, the green form located at the table in the back of the room. Please hand the completed form to Delia Smart, Board Manager, before the item comes up on the agenda. Please complete a separate form for each agenda item you'd like to comment. Ms. Smart is sitting at the table in the back of the room. Members of public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in the front of the room. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Board Member Jackie Gabey.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to report out action taken in closed session. In closed session by, a motion by board member Odo and a second by board member Vegas, the board agreed unanimously to appoint Brian Phillips to the position of Administrator of Teaching and Learning. Brian Phillips currently serves as the Director of STEM. Ms. Phillips has served Visalia Unified for a total of eighteen years. She taught mathematics for ten years, served as a teacher on special assignment for three years, and was an assistant principal prior to being appointed to her current role. Prior to her employment with VUSD, Ms. Phillips taught math for a year at Rockland Unified School District and two years at Sanger Unified School District. Ms. Phillips holds a Bachelor of Science degree in mathematics from the University of California Davis and a Master's of Arts in Education from National University. She holds a single subject teaching credential on administrative and an administrative service credential. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations, Ms. Phillips. In closed session, on a motion by board member Gabey and a second by board member Naylor, the board agreed unanimously to appoint Kathleen Sepuentes to the position of Principal of Mountain View Elementary School. Kathleen Sepuentes has worked for VUSD the last three years. She taught fifth grade for a year before moving into her current role as a teacher on special assignment. Prior to her employment with VUSD, Ms. Sepuentes worked at Madera Unified School District, where she served as principal for eight years, vice principal for four years, preschool coordinator for two years, and a teacher for three years. Ms. Sepuentes holds a Bachelor of Arts in Liberal Studies, Child and Family Studies, and a Master of Arts in Educational Leadership and Administration from California State University Fresno. She holds a multiple subjects teaching credential and administrative service credential. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations to Ms. Sepuentes. The following are revisions to the board agenda, enclosures nine, twelve, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-seven. We will now have a student performance, Mr. Bishop.
Good evening, Board President Kamoyan, Superintendent Shrum, board members, community members. I'm not Mr. Bishop, Mr. Bishop's actually preparing right now to get ready with, with the group here. But my name is Mark Thompson, Assistant Superintendent of Learning and Leadership. Tonight, what I'd like to welcome is review Raptor Advanced Orchestra to our school board meeting tonight. The RMS Orchestra Director is Hannah Lambert. Hannah is also the orchestra director of Denton Elementary School and Global Learning Charter School. The Raptor Advanced Orchestra is a mix of levels, including both seventh and eighth graders. At the CMEA Large Ensemble Festival last spring, they earned the unanimous superior ratings. Thirteen Raptors made it to the TK MEA Honor Orchestra this year as well. They are an incredibly hardworking group of students who show Raptor vision throughout their music making and academics. They are accompanied tonight by Ridgeview Middle School, Middle School Principal Michael Yates. And Raptor Advanced Orchestra selections for this evening are the Star Spangled Banner, arranged by Sandra DeCal, and Carol of the Bells, arranged by Michael Hopkins. Please rise at this time for our national anthem. As they're heading out, I just wanna say, I just wanna say thank you to parents as well. This is not just a commitment of the students, but it's also the parents and students. There's a lot of effort that went into that, that's amazing. You guys are sound amazing tonight, so thank you. Let's give them one more big hand as they head out tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ridgeview, that was just absolutely beautiful, and I hope everybody got in the Christmas spirit. And moving on to spotlight on good things happening in the district, Superintendent Shrum.
All right, well, good evening, Board President Kamoyan, Clerk Gabey, and board members. Of course, first spotlight, I have to say, was for those that weren't able to tune in or be here at five o'clock. Of course, we had our swearing in ceremony for our newly elected and returning board members, and also at our organizational meeting, the election of our board president and clerk. And so I just wanna congratulate everybody sitting up here. It takes a lot to stand up and say, I wanna be part of, you know, government, part of public service, raising your hand. But we appreciate, I appreciate you and the work that we're gonna do together to support our over thirty-two thousand students, all the way from pre-K, TK, UK, all the way through our adult students. So, thank you. As we talk about the spotlight, wanna just begin, of course, with our beliefs and our commitments, which are so very important because how now we take these, we'll talk about strategic plan in a little while, and take these from something that's written on paper to make them meaningful and reflect reality for every single one of our students. I do want to say, we are aware, of course, we presented back in October or roundabout there, our academic data from the twenty-two school year. And so we know that's when we talked about forty-one percent of our kids in ELA, twenty-four percent in math being at or above grade level. Of course, we're not satisfied with that. I do believe folks did the best they could during the pandemic time, but now we gotta get serious again. It's back to work and how we work to improve that. We've done a lot of work that we'll talk about to do that. We know that this data is now gonna be reflected in our state dashboard. And so it's been a couple of years since the state had the dashboard, which is where you go in and kinda get a pulse check of how the district and how individual schools are doing. And of course, it should not be a surprise that that data is currently embargoed, but when the dashboard does become public, it's going to show what we already know, that our student performance in math and ELA is low. It's going to show that our chronic absenteeism is very high, and it's gonna show some concerning data around suspension rates. This is information we know and that we're actively working to improve. It's also an area where we need our parents and we need our community. We know that a lot of our students in the past year were absent. Maybe there was COVID, maybe there was flu, maybe there was whatever. And while this year we are seeing improvement in our attendance rate, it is still not where it needs to be. And it's hard to learn if you're not in class and not in school. So I do just wanna take a moment to encourage and to talk to our families, our students, about the importance of attendance, about the importance of engagement in school. I'm confident with the work this board and this district team is doing, we are gonna see improvement in our academic indicators. But I do want to be transparent and for our board to be aware that we do expect the dashboard to become public either sometime later in December or very early January. And of course, when that does become public, we will notify our community of that data now being available. And again, our beliefs and commitments are evidence of that work, our investment in district supports, our academic tutoring programs, all of those things, utilizing our progressions, our adopted textbooks, are all things that we're going to do to continue to improve our students' academic performance. And then, of course, engaging in class, right? Making sure our content, our instruction is not only rigorous, but also engaging. So our students wanna be in class, right? So more to come on that, but I did just, this is probably our last chance for me to tell you that's coming public before it actually becomes public. So I did wanna make that public, that it's coming public, right? All right, so spotlight on the district, many, many good things as we round out two thousand and twenty-two. Hard to believe that's happening, but just a few more weeks to go. And just what, three more school days to go before our students and teachers enter a well-deserved break? Not that our student board rep is counting down the days or anything, but we do know that's right around the corner. So, starting with some spotlights, Riverway partnering with Bethlehem Center, located in the neighborhood to collect canned food for our, distribute to our families, gave out two hundred and fifty mils hygiene products and blankets and groceries. So great job, Riverway. Global Learning Charter on the right-hand side there, ornaments around the world. Shout out to the PTA, which provided the opportunities for families to spend time together. We know that when families are engaged, the students demonstrate a higher level of academic achievement. Valley Oak there had four rise-up celebrations this school year based on each component of their acronym, respect, integrity, self-control, and excellence. They had, this event was focused on respect. The staff nominate two students who have exuded respect for that quarter. They're rewarded at the celebration with a goodie bag and many other items as well. So congratulations to those students, and I love when we recognize our students in such public ways for doing things that we want other students to do as well. Continuing our spotlight, Houston and the Police Athletic League Breakfast with Santa Claus. Police Athletic League hosted breakfast with Santa at Houston Elementary. And grateful for our Police Athletic League partners. And I think I saw on Twitter, this was just one of many, many things that not only our Visalia Police Department and other entities are doing to help and support the students, not only in our school system, because these are students that are part of our community, and our school system is part of an amazing community. International Education Week, Andy R. Mitchell celebrating benefits of international education, learning a little bit about the world. And so you see a picture of that work right there as well. Expanded learning opportunities, again, can't say enough about the work that Andy is leading with his team and our directors of ELOP as well. Just all of these things that now because of this funding source and opportunity from the state we're able to do for our students that we were never able to do before. Shared with you last time, some of the field trips they went on, on the weekend, right? And so parents were able to take an early shopping day, right? As kids got to go and experience some great places within our community. Our winter intercession enrollment is already at eight hundred and six students. This is going to be picking up next week, and so really excited about Pro Youth and other partners being onsite. Arts Visalia gonna be an active and enjoyable time for our students to take benefits of learning and experiences beyond the school day and the school calendar, really. Moving into some of our spotlight on high schools, we have LD Amante in the top left. Girls and Boys Cross Country, we're east, in the East Yosemite League. Individual champions out of that group, Devon Abera Boys, Brooklyn Buwanan Girls, both qualified for state championships, so awesome, wish them good luck there. Golden West High School in the top right, the girls' golf team finished second in the region section championships. Marley Montgomery finished third, and Ava Tracy finished fourth individually in Division Three. Mount Whitney, we have there on the bottom left. Avery Klein Volleyball, Drew Evans Boys Cross Country, were named Mount Whitney's Pursuing Victory with Honor recipients for the fall season from the Visalia Downtown. Kewanas Summer Herrera Girls Tennis was the East Yosemite League undefeated singles champion, section qualifier. We have Jose Lewis Guerrero Baseball signed his letter of intent to play at Fresno State. So moving on to the collegiate level there. Redwood High School, Boys and Girls Cross Country, Girls Water Polo, were the East Yosemite League champions for Fall '22. So great job to those ladies, boys, and yes, ladies for the Yosemite League, yes. Moving to VAPA Visual Performing Arts, again, thank you to Ridgeview and their team tonight. And I don't think we mentioned, but we appreciate our director of VAPA stepping in and providing some guest conducting so that the kids were still able to perform tonight. I think he did okay. He should keep his day job for sure there. Nine Redwood students that earned the opportunity to perform in the state-level high school orchestra in San Diego. And what was great about this is several members of our board had the opportunity to go see them practice because we were in San Diego for our School Board Association Conference. Congratulations to Mr. Yakota and these nine talented students. Continuing, the Golden West Marching Band and Color Guard won California State Championships Northern Regional on Saturday, November twelfth, was hosted here at the Community Stadium. The band scored eighty-eight point eight, which is a high score, and performed their best show to date. Extremely proud of their hard work. Band also competed in Huntington Beach, California State Championship Finals, along with LD Amante and Redwood. Redwood placed fourth at the California State Championship Finals. And then, of course, speaking of holiday, the seventy-sixth Annual Candy Cane Lane Parade. Thank you to our schools, Transportation Department, everyone for helping our students get to this community event. Many of our secondary music programs display their holiday cheer with song and dance and photos. Thank you to Visalia Times Delta, Ron Holman, for those photos. And then one Visalia Connected, although all that kinda fits into this as well. Goshen Elementary School and Pipeline Church. Goshen Elementary School and Pipeline Church, Goshen hosted the church whose members handed out 500 individual Thanksgiving meals to the community before Thanksgiving. Sequoia High School partnered with the Central Valley Food Bank and Food Link to Larry County to distribute hundreds of pounds of food to families. And also thank you to our staff. I know we have board members join in as well. And then Character Counts, this was great. I got to see this interview. Congratulations to our student athletes who led the development of this conference. And this was athletes from across the, all of our schools and all the schools in the county coming together to learn about being a student athlete, physical, mental, social, moral development. This was planned and developed by the athletes, by our students, and our own Alex Elick, a senior at Mount Whitney, was featured in the interview, and I would definitely encourage you to go back to see it. He did a phenomenal job. So, great job. Another, just more examples of our students leading every day. And then one Visalia Connected, my student advisories met last week, always a joy, elementary, middle, and high. You see some images there. We learn a lot from our students, and I shared with some, some folks, our elementary students were, were rare form. I'm not sure what the right category is, but I had a series of things, right, that I was going to talk to them about and wanted their feedback on. We got through one of the items only because there was so much feedback. It was awesome. So just a huge shout out to all the advisories, but especially elementary this time, they just, they just were exceptional. So, there's no, no one should worry if I know what's happening in our schools. I can tell you, they tell you. Spotlight also continuing, we had a parent advisory, teacher advisory also continuing to share a message meant with the downtown Kiwanis. And so appreciate all of those advisories and the information that they share and that I'm able to share with them. Post-secondary options, we've heard loud and clear, not only from our board, but from our community, what are we doing to help make sure our students have options past high school, whether that be college or career. We know already 40% of our students met A through G, but only 15% chose to leave and immediately go to a four-year institution. So we know we've got work to do on building these pathways. And so that work is underway. We met with Fresno State and building off of our work that we did with UC Merced, we've gone to Fresno State and said, hey, we want to develop a guaranteed admissions pipeline with you. We want to create a pipeline for our Black and Latino students because Fresno State has directly said we want to increase the number of students on our campus. So again, potential partnerships. We met with Fresno Pacific. Again, how do we build pipelines? How do we get kids to you who want to be teachers? In fact, we just received a CTE grant. I'm going to get the terminology all wrong. I know Vicki's sitting over there looking at me. But basically, we're going to be able to start a future educator pathway in one of our high schools. And so how great it would be, right, as we build that, to then have a college partner ready to say, hey, seamlessly come onto our school, right? So we are working on these things, and I think it's an extremely exciting time to be a student in Visalia and to be a parent. And let me just give you a little bit of a vision of where I want this to go. So, imagine, you know, you're a sixth grade parent or a sixth grade student, you're getting ready to go to middle school, in most cases, or seventh and eighth at your current site. We have a district-wide meeting where we say, listen, you're getting ready to enter middle school. Some of you might be taking, say, Math 1 in eighth grade, right? That's going to count for high school credit, and then we'll count as one of your three years of math. But what if we're able to say to every one of those students, while they're sitting in sixth grade, if you do these, these things, X, Y, and Z, 1, 2, 3, whatever it might be, and we're telling the parents in the room, if you make sure your kid does these things, they can walk right into any one of these institutions. And in many cases, in talking to these institutions, there's scholarship money or other things available for the students to attend. So, talk about engaging our parents, right? If that kid's grade comes back, don't you mess up your chance to get into Fresno State with a free ride or to Fresno Pacific or to go into that educator pathway or to go into that nursing pathway, right? We want to build and show our students what's possible, and we have to start it in elementary and middle school. So this excites me. Yes, right now, it's just beginning conversations, but there's a lot of work that's going to begin. Definitely led by every one of these executive cabinet members, our staff, our counselors and others, so that we can make that a reality. So I would say, stay tuned. We've started with just a couple of major universities, but we're not done. And we want to make it where when you're in sixth grade, you go into middle school, you know you do these things. Once you hit high school, you're guaranteed to go to any one of these institutions. I mean, I think that's very powerful, and that's how we changed the story of so many of our students that may be qualified, but just don't go and don't know that they can and don't know that we're going to support them, and the school's going to support them. But we can't wait till they're a junior or senior to do that. We got to start it in elementary and middle school. So a lot more to come on that. Obviously, I'm very excited about it. Huge shout out to our administrator for communication outreach, Andre Pacina, for initiating and really getting the ball going on building and developing these partnerships. So enough about that. Like I said, I can talk all day about that. Exciting stuff, yes. All right, principals learning about staff retention. Also shout out to our students, Educational Services Team, because it's one thing to tell principals, hey, do this, do that, right? But what we want to change our learning model and so that we're actually modeling how to do things, right? We're making it interactive. And so many of that team created a fishbowl opportunity, which is lingo. So basically, a group of people are doing a best practice, and then we're all sitting around them observing that best practice so that we can learn from it. And so great job to them as they worked through some MTSS work. Also, our elementary math, TOSAs and PARAs do the math, and so you can see some interactive dialogue and discussion there. Had the great opportunity, along with several of our board members on the left-hand side, to participate in the Women's Farm Workers Conference to share about how we're supporting safety and security to our schools with parents at the Women's Farm Workers Conference. I would say there were thousands of individuals there who send their kids to our schools, and so it was a great opportunity. Our Family and Community Resource Center, our social workers and others had several tables set up so that families that needed additional support, that was available. It was an amazing conference, and I look forward to us being a yearly sponsor and participant in that event. And then, as you can see on the right, and all, one member was unable to be in the, in the, in the picture, but she was there. And so I do want to highlight that all seven members of our board were present at the California School Boards Association, where they had an opportunity to hear best practices from across the state, engage with other board members. And I just, I don't know of, I don't know if there were any other districts that every single board member was present. I think that's exceptional. I think our community should know the time and effort it took to either miss work or arrange childcare or whatever. But our board made attending this conference a priority. And, and I'm a very grateful and proud superintendent for that. They represented Visalia Unified extremely well. I've already told them next year, they're presenting at this as well. So stay tuned for that. Continuing our spotlight on the district, our Alice Training began. Now, as the board remembers, you approved a contract for us to enter into this training where we're making sure every staff member across the district is prepared in the event of an emergency. We're all going to use the same lingo. Eventually, we'll work on how we translate this into education modules for our students. More to come on that. But this began with our staff, with our school and district administrators in early, excuse me, in late January, early February. This training will expand to all of our site-based staff, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, classroom teachers, every single individual. And Visalia Unified will be trained on what to do in the event of the unthinkable. We have to be prepared. We know unfortunately, this is a reality of the world that we live in today. And we want every single one of our staff members and also eventually our students as well to feel empowered, whether they're at school or out in the community or at Walmart, that should something happen, they now have a set of skills that they can apply to work to keep themselves safe. So very heavy training, but very important. And so thank you for this board's focus on safety and creating the conditions for us to do this across the district. And social media, lots of things happen emphasizing our present campaign. We've talked about the importance of that. Over 30% of our students were labeled chronically absent last year. Families, we need your support. We got to improve that. We had National Special Education Day, great video by our director showcasing much of the work that that team, our administrator, excuse me, much of the work that teams does. Rosa Parks Day, continuing social media shout-outs, our CSU UC application deadlines are coming up. Giving Tuesday, of course, and highlighting our third-year math we heard from one of our students. Staff appreciation, while many of us go home for the break, these teams kick into high gear, right? Making sure our facilities are ready, and so we appreciate them. Staff appreciation for classified, highlight our Charter Home School and National Substitute Day. And so, oops, can you pause it just a second? So, I hit it too fast there. So, shout out to our teachers. So in collaboration with Sequoia Symphony, several of our teachers were part of performing Oh Holy Night, a boy band Christmas, featuring pop stars, elite symphony members. And interestingly enough, they're currently charting in the top 25. Of what? I don't know, but that sounds, that sounds good. And featuring Deanna Barnett, Ricky Avila, Max and Vieira, Hannah Lambert, Rodney Yakota from multiple schools, Green Acres, Redwood, several here, but so we'll listen for just a minute of our adults showcasing our employees here for a moment and their talents being utilized. And now apparently they're in the top 40 or whatever, you know. So, all right. Thank you. I'll turn it back over to our Board President. I remain available for any questions or comments.
Are there any questions or comments?
I just also wanted to give a shout out to our student board member Cameron Hood, who was featured in one of those photos because he participated in the Golden West Marching Band this season. So, great job, Cameron.
Good. Any other questions or comments? Thank you Superintendent Shrum. Next, we have the One Visalia Connected Initiative update. Our administrator in charge of communication, Andre Pacina.
Hello, good evening, Board President Gamoyan, members of the board, Superintendent Shrum. My name is Andre Pacina. I'm pleased to be here tonight to talk about One Visalia Connected. So you saw just very, a lot of examples in the spotlight around how our students are connected in so many ways. All of the just activities and opportunities, not just in academics, but visual performing arts, as well as giving back to the community and in food giveaways, et cetera. So we're just going to spotlight around what we're doing to kind of get the ball rolling on the roadmap that's going to be coming, you know, at the end of this school year. So I'm going to take you through kind of slide deck that we kind of share with each of the groups. So you can, you can kind of experience as well for yourself what we've been sharing with the superintendent's been sharing, not only with our One Visalia Connected roundtables and advisories, but also with our community-based organizations, right? So the first thing that we always share with them is the core beliefs and commitments. And we're so proud of this and so proud of you, the board, for doing this because this really gives us guidance as a, as a district to be able to say, like, these are the things that we're, we're sticking a claim in, right? So these, these three core beliefs of making sure that all of our students achieve a high levels and demonstrate continuous growth is so important to us that we have our family and community engaged in our student success and that the learning environment environments are safe, supportive, and innovative. And just to give you feedback from the groups that we've, that we've spoken to, whether they're parents, students, community-based organizations, they, they themselves have provided feedback that they, they really appreciate this work. And so I know you don't hear that all the time because you're, you're here in these, these business meetings, right? But when we go out into the community, that is something that they're, it's very, they're very much proud of. And so thank you for that. And so within our work itself and One Visalia Connected, it's really about all these different areas, but I'll point on two things. One is really this providing this, this engagement with families and communities, making sure that they're engaged. And then also the, 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 the third bullet in, or I'm sorry, the fourth bullet, and ensuring all students are known by name, by their name, welcome each day, and they're connected to meaningful activities, right? That's really what we're focused on here. So we know that another thing that we share with, with folks is that the role of the district. Because a lot of people don't understand that, right? And so Superintendent Shrum's done a great job of really just letting people know, how does it, how does this role of district play out? And so it starts with our family and our community. And then from there, goes to the board, to you, that set the conditions for, for, for the district, for the superintendent, who then sets the conditions for the district, and then moves on to school leadership, to the teachers and staff, and finally the students, right? And that, our whole focus and our goal is that all of our students are 100% college and or career-ready. And so, this is something that's also very important, and we've gotten feedback from a lot of people that they're, they've never seen it this way. They've never, it's never been explained to them. And so that's something that, that's very important for, for me to report back to you is that folks in the past had never seen what really was a role of the board, right? And so this is very important that we're educating them on this. So today, we're going to go through just really, really quickly, you know, what's the, the guiding principles for One Visalia Connected? What's crucial for student success, the research, the learning process, and then what we've learned from stakeholders, right? So I want to bring back to you kind of their feedback. So the first thing is, we know that One Visalia Connected is really about providing meaningful activities and building impactful relationships for each and every student, right? Regardless of the student's grade, regardless of their socioeconomic background, anything, every single student deserves that opportunity to have a meaningful experience and as well as be engaged in a meaningful relationship, right, a mentorship, something of that nature. And we know that a lot, about half of our students are engaged in VAPA, but that means that half might not be engaged in anything, right? Or, you know, some are engaged in sports, some are engaged in VAPA, but we still know that not every student's engaged. So how do we make sure that each student is engaged in something outside of the classroom? When we first started this, we talked about it's not being engaged within the confines of a classroom in a book. It's what happens outside of that, right? The guiding principles for this are there that we connect, we have students connected to meaningful activities that every student's known by name. That's so important. And I know that some of you are educators, you taught, and you know how important it was for you to know your students by name? That when they felt that value, that you saw them really step up to the plate, to every single expectation that you had for them because they knew that you cared, right? And so the same thing, we want to make sure that that happens for each and every student that walks through each and every classroom in our, in our district. And then the last thing is that the district community commit to providing those interactions. And so that commitment has happened over the last semester in the roundtables, in the advisories, and us going out outside the confines of the district and saying, hey, we want to meet you where you're at, community. And so through that, we've shared this kind of crucial research, and, and the superintendents said this before, right? When students are engaged and they're engaged in something meaningful, then they have less time to be engaged in stuff that's not meaningful or stuff that's going to get them in trouble, right? And so the other thing is, is that students who feel connected to school are more likely to have a better academic achievement, better success. And we've, we've seen that time and time again. And so that's really our charge is how do we, how do we change that? And so the learning process that we had over the last semester was to provide roundtables. So we reached out to civic leaders, community-based organizations, that's like Salt and Light. That's like the Rescue Mission, Visalia Rescue Mission, right? We reached out to education partners. So we had UC Merced there, we had COS there, different pro, Heart Pro Youth was there as well. Faith-based leaders, we had many individuals from various faiths. It was very much open to anyone, right, to come and share how they're connecting students and how we can connect together. And then industry partners. We know that we have a robust college and career readiness program, and we have a lot of industry partners that are out there providing these internships, opportunities for students. But we still have a lot of businesses that are out there that aren't, right? And Visalia is a growing community. And so how do we connect those, those industry partners? The superintendent advisories, Superintendent Shrum has gone over those two. We just met with parents. We met with students a couple of times already, teachers, classified employees, both at here at the, the district and also at Ops One. So all of our custodians, our maintenance folks, we've met with them as well. And so that was something that was important, too. I know that was something that they had commented on in the past, that that might not have been the case. And so really, they were very proud of that. And so, so thank you. And so really they were very proud of that. And so, so thank you to the superintendent for really reaching out to all folks. And we really focus on these four areas, right? We asked them these four questions. What are we currently doing to engage students outside the classroom? We need to know, right? We know there's VAPA, we know there's athletics, we know those, there's those things, but what else is there? Well, we find out that there's a gentleman who calls kids like the day before and says, hey, I have five acres that we need fruit picked. Come out and pick it because we're going to donate it to the food bank. Well, we didn't know that, right? So that's, that's something that's, that's super important. There's other engagement opportunities that the service clubs have that we didn't know of. So we started to connect folks, you know, schools with those as well. We found out that some service clubs actually have supported some schools for a long time, but they've been in very small increments, right? And so having this question was so huge because we began to see that. Where could we partner, be better partners? And so we found out some information about that as well that I'll share. And what are some current barriers? What are some things that are stopping? And a lot of times it's not to anybody's fault. It's just over time, these have been created, right? These barriers have been created, not intentionally, but it's just what happened, right? So we have to acknowledge them, we have to figure out how to remove them and then move forward for our students. And the last one is how do we communicate better? And that, that's so key, right? We know that in any relationship, any partnership, communication is a foundation. And if it's broken, then we're not going to move forward. And so we wanted to make sure that they knew those four, we answered those four questions. So here's some examples, a lot of you or some of you were part of these in one way, shape or form. And I know you would see me asking for feedback, like how could we improve? How can we get better? We kind of, you know, morphed the questions over time. And so we asked a lot of different groups. Some were on Zoom, which were the, the students and Cameron's one of those that's been with us a couple of times on, on those. And just like Superintendent Shrum said, they don't hold back. You know, they, they, they tell us how that is. And to, to me, that's really an indication of that they're in a safe place, that they're actually able to open up and say, hey, this is how we feel, right? So, so that, that feedback that they're giving us is super important. And that's feedback that we'll give to cabinet and, and, and various groups so we can really look at the decision we're making. And so this is what we learned. We found that we have a community that wants to help and get involved. And a lot of you heard that, I'm sure a lot unclear over the years, right? There's so many people that want to help and there's so many people that have. But there's a lot of people that haven't because they don't know how to navigate our system, right? They don't know how to connect or they know how to connect only because they know somebody. But they don't know if that's the right person. As a district, we have not had the systems in place to consistently connect our community partners with our schools and departments. And so one of those things that we found as a sub-bullet is there's tons of resources that are out there that we're leaving on the table, right? For example, money, we're leaving a ton of scholarship money on the table for students like Cameron and others that are going to be graduating that don't even know that they have access to that. Where service clubs are coming up to us and saying, we have an excess of over $100,000 that we have not been able to give out because we cannot connect the scholarships to our students, right? And again, it's a system, right? It's creating those conditions. There's, there's things like field trips and other items, right? That, that the service organizations want to provide. And so, so it's so important. So really it's just figuring out how to connect those dots, right? The third finding was that we need to have consistent meetings and digital networks with our community partners to keep lines of communication open. A lot of them are busy just like us. So they want to figure out ways where we can have like a menu of resources where they can highlight what they're going to give to, to, to the students at the families of Visalia Unified. And also that it's two-way, that they have some kind of like newsletter or something that's kind of giving them this kind of updates on, on a regular basis. They really talked about having meetings, so we're going to have a convening in, in January to convene all the roundtables to come back together to really look at how we can continue to, to ramp up that can make that line of communication, right? It's so important. And then the last thing is that, that we provide or that there's training provided to these, to these groups and information to community partners on how to engage with schools, how to connect with students and families, right? Because there's a lot of times that's really the, the biggest barrier is really how do I connect with, with, with our district? And so that's super important. So that's something that we talked about a little bit, but that's something that we're going to continue to provide for them, right? And so with that, these are the next steps. So in December, we, we're going to start, which actually this week is really look at a task, the introduction of a task force. So out of all these, these kind of roundtables and advisories, we've, you know, really have asked for folks to step up to be part of a task force. They have, and they're all from different areas, civic, faith-based, CBOs. And they're coming together probably like the best minds, I would say, Visalia, you know, like some really great folks that are coming together and really doing it for our kids. I mean, that's amazing, right? They're coming together and they're saying, we're, we're really calling, getting onto this call to action to open the doors for our students, right? And then in January, we're going to do a roundtable convening and that's, that's coming up in January, where we're going to invite everybody. So all 80 participants, around 80 participants that, that worked with us. And really just go through one last time, this is what we learned, kind of the same information I shared with you tonight, but a little more, some, a little more details because there'll be more time there. And then what, what, what do they expect out of the task force? What should the roadmap look like at the end? And then at that point, that roadmap's designed by the task force and then it's really shared with the, the entire group, right? But this task force is like the working committee. And then in May, or sometime in May, that we would present this kind of connected framework to the board or a draft of that. So then we really have a system. So it's not no longer about, oh, I know person A or person B, and that's why I'm going to connect to the district. But that there's actually a system in place that has, that sets those conditions. So then everybody has equal access and opportunities to connect with, with, with us. And so to provide those meaningful opportunities and, and relationships with our students. So with that said, that's, that's really, that's, that's our update for One Visalia Connected. And if there's any questions from the board.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Thank you for this. So let's say that I'm a community partner and I'm hearing this tonight and I want to let you know about something that I offer, or I'm a board member and I'm out and about and people come up to me and say, how could I get involved with the district? Is it, this is the type of thing that you're imagining, right? Like this is what we're trying to do. So who do we send them to? Where do we?
Right here.
Just to Andre.
Yeah, you send it to me and that's my, one of my roles. So, and that's what's actually been happening behind the scenes. So there's a lot of meeting and it's really, I go out to meet with them in their spot. It's not, you know, coming here first, right? So I go out, a lot of just meeting with folks and there's a place I just went just recently to, you know, existed Farmer Bob's out there in Ivanhoe. Really cool spot. And so met with her for, for an hour. It was raining that day. I've been to just different places and so just let, send them to me and I'll definitely connect them.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Pessina.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to Visalia Unified District Strategic Plan. Moving forward with clarity, developing a strategic plan, Superintendent Shrum.
Thank you, Madam President, board members and our community. I am very excited to share a little bit about a strategic plan. I've talked about this before, you've heard me mention it. It's not something that this district has had recently, maybe in a, in a previous state, but no one seems to know when I asked them the last time was that we had a strategic plan. And so this is very powerful. And so want to take some time tonight to share a little bit about how this will help us move forward with clarity. This is an action item on our consent agenda. I want to begin with why we have a strategic, why we're going to have a strategic plan, the process we went through, recommendations and some next steps. First of all, again, foundational item, we now have beliefs and commitments. We know what we want for our students, we know what we want for our school system. We can take this and do several different things. We can take it and just throw things against a wall. Oh, well, this might work to improve achievement, or maybe we do this to help families, right? Because this is our belief and commitment. That's certainly a strategy. I would argue it may not be well thought out, probably proved to be a costly strategy and only realized too late whether it was effective or not. And then when we do find effective practices, how do we scale them to a whole school system, right? So it is about how do we make this the reality for every student in our district? It is our role at the district level to create the conditions for our school sites, our students, our leaders ultimately to be successful. Part of doing that is to make sure we have policies in place that allow that work to happen. The strategic plan document, the strategic plan that will eventually be created will become policy. And I think that's important because one of the roles of our unified governance team is to create policy that guides the district. And so I'll say again, the strategic plan ultimately will be presented to this board and will be policy. So it won't be a matter of whether we do these things or not, it will be policy. So obviously, as you can imagine, to get to policy, there are a lot of steps in place. So why are we going down this road? So I refer a lot back to the Superintendent Search Survey from months ago, prior to me being called by the board to come to Visalia. Now, we've talked about how we heard out of this three of the top priorities, academic safety and communication. But also close to the very top was a superintendent that had a clear vision and a systems approach. And we also heard within our areas of focus that another very high one, in addition to academics, communication, safety and security, was a district mission, vision and goals. That's foundational, right? To get to where we want to go. Now, probably the most powerful image to me is this one. So I've shared this with the board before, when we talked about in our work session, creating our beliefs and commitments and why we needed to create beliefs and commitments. I said, imagine every one of those arrows on the left-hand side is a good, well-intentioned idea. Maybe it's a teacher in their classroom. And so that's a good arrow, right? It's impacting 20 kids or 30, you know, right? Okay, that's great for those kids. Or maybe it's a, a program that we're going to pilot and it maybe it's impacting 1,000 or 2,000 kids. Okay, again, good. But then you start to layer on top of that, all the different plans that we create in the district, oftentimes in isolation of one another. So things like our LCAP, right? Yes, we get community input, but it's one document. Does it drive the system? It should, I don't know, right? CONAP, now that's a fancy term for all of the consolidated applications, all of our federal programs, our Title I plan, all of those sorts of plans. We have facilities plans. I don't even know what that bottom initial is off the top of my head. I forgot. We have a lot of plans, special, single plan, student success, right? So the point being, we have a lot of plans, a lot of well-intentioned activities in our district. Also imagine each one of those arrows costs money. Spend a lot of money on a lot of different things, go in a lot of different directions. The purpose of a strategic plan is to align these things, increase our collective impact. How do we take these well-intentioned items, all of the plans that we have to create and create a comprehensive strategic plan, a roadmap that will guide us for the future, for at least the next five years? That helps us get from where we are to where we want to be. It also serves as a filter. So as things come our way, it helps us stay on track. It might be a good idea, but it's not part of our plan right now. We need to stay focused. A strategic plan does that for an organization. Then LCAP and all these other plans are derived from the strategic plan, right? Which is foundationally based on our core beliefs and commitments. What is strategic planning? Ongoing organizational process of using knowledge to document a business's or school system, right? Intended direction used to prioritize efforts, allocate resources. I think that's important. Align shareholder and employee organizational goals and ensure these goals are backed by data and sound reasoning. Other data here that strategic plan touches every employee, everybody knows what the direction is, right? It's, it's not guessing. Well, what is the district going to do in two years down the road? I don't know. It changes every year, right? Well, now we've got a plan. There won't, that won't be the case anymore. And you see some quotes there, Harvard Business School, UC Davis, talking about team, solid planning, it pays off, right? A well-thought-out strategic plan provides a multitude of benefits, including focus, hope, alignment and forward movement. And then another quote in here about why it's great to have an external partner to help build that and the benefits that they bring together. So as we began this, we looked at and we, we reached out and asked for some different proposals on different companies that do this, of course, in the educational field, business field, there are a lot out there. And what we specifically wanted to make sure is we wanted a plan that people had worked with medium to large districts. We're a medium to large size district, as we've talked about, 32nd largest in California, right? We wanted a mix of people that were both researchers because it's important that a plan be based on research, balanced with practice. Either one of those in isolation is not beneficial. So if you only have practice, but it's not based on any research, you're not going to get good results. If you only have research, nobody knows how to apply it, that's not going to work either, right? So it's got to be a mix of those. And also very important, who was able to articulate to us a solid thought out plan of how we will engage with all of our stakeholders? We have 32,000 students through adult in our district. We need 32,000 plus, right? When you factor in family members, people to respond to our, to our stakeholder involvement as this will entail. And reviewed by executive cabinet again for making sure those things happen. So we have a recommendation out of all of that research, we came to this group called THROUGH. They, their proposal by far, we felt was the strongest. It was a mix of experienced team members. One of their team members is a former large district superintendent. Another member of the, of the main team is a sitting school board member in another district, right? So bringing together wealth. And then also their extended team was a diverse team that attracted us as well. And also from a variety of backgrounds, experience with districts, you see a few they've worked with, data analysis, and then developing a living action plan for each identified goal. So what a strategic plan will do is as we identify the goals from our beliefs and commitments, they help draw out an action plan that then drives our work for the next five years to make that happen, right? And so what was really important to me, and, and I want to make sure I make this clear is there are a lot of people that do strategic plan work out there. And they come to you because I've experienced them with a shell. Here's our shell of a strategic plan. Now we're just going to change language in it for Visalia, right? So our plan looks very similar to the district down the road or the district in another state, right? We wanted a group to work with us to bring expertise, to really create something totally unique and from scratch. And of all of the groups that responded to us, this was the only one I felt that did that. Another thing that spoke to us is they have a clear plan for stakeholder engagement, community, family, students, board members, school leaders, staff, district planning team, and of course, community. So this was very powerful as well. And so you can see some of the different months. Again, this is the proposal, so should this be adopted, we'll work and draft, you know, and make this more fitting to what we need as well. But again, the tools that they have available, their specificity around how they're going to engage stakeholders was very powerful. So the next step for this, and happy to take questions and answers, of course, is hopeful approval of this contract. Now, yes, is there a total cost to this? Yes, $117,000. Anything that's done well is going to have a tag attached to it. Now, we can certainly cobble together a strategic plan, you know, that, that may or may not be impactful to the organization. I believe if we're going to do this work, we need to commit to doing it well. And we need to commit to creating a plan that really will drive this organization. And while there is a cost initially, I go back to that chart of arrows. And I firmly believe that a well-thought-out strategic plan that identifies priorities, that has action items and budget items aligned to that, actually saves money in the long run because we're not throwing money at whatever comes down the line, right? We're strategic now about how we spend it. And when we come to the board asking for things, we can articulate where it is in the strategic plan and how it connects to what we said we would do in a strategic plan. And then if it's not in the strategic plan, then the board can say, that's not in our strategic plan. We're not going to put resources to that right now. So should this contract be approved, we'll meet with a group to design the strategic planning process. There'll be a steering committee. And then as early as late January, we're going to begin community, parents, students coming to you. So get ready because this is going to run alongside our long-range facilities plan. So we're going to come find you when we have our community meetings because we're going to need every single person's in this community's input to build this plan along with our long-range facility plan. So that we're clear, we're transparent about where we're going and where, what we're going to do in year one. So that we're clear, we're transparent about where we're going and where what we're going to do in year one, year two, year three, year four and year five. This work will continue through the spring, through the summer. And then depending on how that work progresses, we would come to the board with a strategic plan document for the board to review and hopefully adopt sometime in early fall. And then, of course, the work would begin to create the action teams within the district and community to make those things happen throughout our district. So very excited about this work and what I think it can do. I don't think, as a district, we have been led by a really strategic vision and a strategic plan in a while. And I think our students, our community, our parents, even this board feel that and what it feels like when we're not guided by that. And we see that result, you know, we see that in our student achievement and other indicators. And so I'm excited about the work that we'll be engaging in. This will be very time-consuming. But again, if it's done well and done right, it will be, I think, just a game changer for our district. And so, Madam President, that concludes my report. I turn it back over to you for any questions.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Mr. Belt.
I'm amazed that we often think that we can do better fitness if we buy a gym and put it in our garage and it collects dust. This is a plan to actually look at all the fitness that we have in our district, where we need to do more reps or different facilities altogether. And so it makes sense that we not only know where we're going, but we will save money through the process. We will save money in the future. I, I, you know, to me, I'm newbie here, but when I see millions and millions of dollars and I sit next to Fresno Unified's chief financial officer, he tells me Fresno Unified is a one-point-four-billion-dollar budget. This money's that just blows my, well, hair I have left. And so I applaud you to do this, Kirk, because we we need something that gives us clear direction of where we're going. We don't know where we're going if we have no idea how to get there. And so it sounds like this will actually, and and I balked at a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. My first house didn't cost that much, but but I can see when you get, when you get a trainer alongside you, helps you to do the things you need to get done to actually come up with something that makes sense.
Love the analogy, actually, that's real, I'll I'll be taking that. Yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I had a question, Superintendent Trump. Can you sort of explain the difference between what would be like an audit? That's like searching for kind of stuff to trim versus a strategic plan?
Sure, well, I mean, I I think you you kind of said it there in a way, right? An audit is really an in-depth look at your internal operations, your internal systems, which systems are working. And use strategically, it's also very, I shouldn't say strategically to get it confused, but an audit can be done many different ways. You know, most people think of a financial audit, right? Which we actually do every year as part of our, you know, transparency, we have to do an audit. So there are times and and there are different things we've been talking about as a team that we might want to audit within our district as far as our internal systems and processes to see if they're functioning well. And then if they are, great, how do we replicate? If they aren't, how do we make modifications? And so we're looking at some different things to do along that line, but really, the strategic plan is forward-facing. So it's taking where we are now, where do we want to be? And then what are the action steps between year one, year two, year three, year four and five? What do those action steps entail? How much money are those action steps going to take, right? So on and so forth. So it's really more of an outward-facing plan that guides the district. And then because of that being an action plan, it then starts to redirect the work of our internal systems and our people to align with that.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
General public comment on any school-related topic may be heard at this time. The board asks that any public comment on any item listed on tonight's agenda be addressed at that, at that time, the item comes up for discussion by the board. To comply with the Brown Act Californian's open public meeting law, board discussion is limited to items on the agenda. Therefore, when receiving public comment for items not on the agenda, the board's role is to limit, is limited to receiving such comment, and the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation in public comment and then the understanding of the board's responsibility. Pursuant to the board policy, the board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and then just individual topics to twenty minutes. It is recommended that you begin your comment by stating your name. We have one public comment, Crystal Reynolds.
Good evening, Superintendent Trump and new board. My name is Crystal Reynolds, and I am the mother of three with one child in the district. So I am going back to my medical information, so I'm sorry if I bore anybody, but I want to ask you, have you considered or even began to imagine a tripledemic? I have, and quite frankly, we have already experienced this. For many years as society, we have always had cases of influenza, coronavirus and RSV running rampant during fall and winter months. So what's different? What's changed? Unfortunately, that change has been fear led by misinformation. The media has already started throwing out a narrative of a tripledemic and posting many frightening cases of RSV. So let me ask you this, before COVID, what age group was the most susceptible and or at risk for developing RSV? My husband with over thirty years in the medical field states that the age group typically typically comes across is zero to three years old. In my work experience, any patients I've ever had with RSV were all under a year. So you must understand why it has come to a complete shock to us and my husband that has recently been transporting adults well over sixty years old diagnosed with RSV. The rumor running through the medical field is that if a patient tests negative for COVID or influenza, they are automatically diagnosed with RSV, which makes sense to why we are now seeing increased cases. Keep this as my, in mind as we start to see increasing RSV numbers throughout the county. Increasing cases will start pushing hospitals to capacity, and of course, so will be a staffing shortage due to medical staff with any positive test, whether that's COVID influenza or RSV. Don't forget about delayed treatments and treatment shortages that tend to conveniently happen before the county public health officer starts calling out orders. I want to make sure that this board is getting true and accurate information. I have no doubt that our county public health officer will attempt to declare emergency over the winter break or prior to returning back to school reinstating masking in schools. I have no doubt that the testing will also be pushed upon our families and staff before returning to school, driving up cases, therefore, an excuse to mask up again. I am telling you that the continued masking is making our community immunosuppressed and is more, making them more susceptible to serious illness, injury or death. The continued testing is only causing unnecessary fear and responses that are limiting our resources. People have woken up to the consequences of masking and the potential effects of the COVID vaccine. Local medical professionals are now acknowledging the risks associated with both and are sharing this information with their parent or patients. Is this board prepared to be proactive and not reactive when it comes to the likelihood of another mask mandate? I see it coming. Think back to when COVID started, the signs are already there. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull any item?
President, Walter Gomoy and I would like to pull item fourteen-three, number six.
Fourteen-three, item enclosure number six.
That's the enclosure twenty-three.
Oh, I'm sorry, enclosure twenty-three, okay. Can I have a?
A motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, motion, motion by case board member Casebeers Saleno, second by board member Naylor. Any? Oh, call for a vote, sorry. I got a little confused there, I'm getting it.
The student board representative votes yes, and the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, Mr. Belt on enclosure number twenty-three.
Yes, I just want to abstain from voting for that. It's the extra service pay for teachers, which my wife is on page thirty-six or whatever in there, because she does a poetry and prose every spring.
I will motion to approve enclosure number twenty-four.
I'll second.
Okay, um, case board member Casebeers Saleno motions to approve it. Second by board member Vegas, all in favor.
The student board representative votes yes, and motion passes six with zero nays and one abstention.
Okay, now we're going on to board member reports. Mr. Hood.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, did I say the wrong one?
I, okay.
I I think people were aware I was referring to, when we made the vote, I was inferring to, referring to enclosure twenty-three, which is the certification of twenty-two, twenty-three extra duty assignments.
Okay, do we need to vote again?
I don't think you need to vote again, if it's clarified for the record, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Hood.
El De Monte High School has sponsored an essentials drive to start off our holiday celebrations. They have collected items for Salt and Light, Rescue Treasures and the Food Bank. El De Monte High School hosted the Winter Formal last Saturday, and Harry Potter inspired the students to create a Yule Ball theme. It was incredibly well-attended and a good time was had. El De Monte High School's VAPA program has been showcasing their talents this month. Choir and advanced orchestra performing on December sixth, dance hosted their winter showcase on December ninth, and the band and orchestra will have a concert on Thursday, December fifteenth at LJ Williams Theater. Golden West likes to report that their Adopt a Star program was an incredible success with over three hundred future trailblazers being given a gift for the holidays that will be delivered both tomorrow and Thursday. The Golden West Small Wishes campaign helped to kick off finals week by providing students with morning pick-me-ups in the form of snacks, drinks and other other objects. Golden West Visual and Performing Arts capped off a successful first semester with a joint performance of The Nutcracker. And Golden West is ending the week strong with dress-up days, morning cocoa, donut holes and much joy. Mount Whitney High School Orchestra collaborated with the Visidero for a winter celebration on Monday, December twelfth at LJ Williams Theater. Mount Whitney High School Band is proudly presenting their winter concert on Wednesday, December fourteenth at LJ Williams Theater. Mount Whitney High School's ASB hosted a fall semester celebration with food vendors and club-hosted activities. And Mount Whitney High School had a week of winter-themed dress-up days to engage students prior to finals week. They celebrated their students who engaged with stickers for their participation. Redwood High School's ASB was able to raise two thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars from their annual gifts of giving silent auction, and the funds will be used to support the Ranger Reach Out. Redwood's band is proud to present their first and second-chair students in tequemia. First, Tuba Jalen Bullock, percussion Emma Buckley, and in second chair, clarinet Emma Ella Boyle, trombone Joey Abbott and Tuba Dolan Morris. Redwood's chamber singers performed Home Alone with Sequoia Symphony Orchestra. And the Redwood Orchestra performs their Christmas concert tonight at seven PM in the LJ Williams Theater. VCIS had the Performing Arts Showcase last Friday at the El De Monte Theater. The independent studies students performed in the following areas. Vocal performance, advanced acting and the VCIS Rock Band made up of students from them, from their contemporary music performance CTE pathway. Students from their dance program were also showcased at the event. The turnout was an almost full theater, and they cannot wait to see what amazing performances will be showcased in the spring. Many senior students from VCIS are graduating early this semester and starting their college career at COS full-time next semester. We could not be prouder of these students for their hard work and dedication. And almost every early grad was college and career-ready with their A through G requirements completed. VCIS is ending the semester with a fun-filled, wacky winter week with five dress-up days to finish strong with lots of school spirit as they head into the winter break. VTAC had their early registration for COS courses and enrolled over a hundred students in COS courses. VTAC students are either taking one or more COS course this spring semester. VTAC's FFA hosted a dinner drive-through, and it was success with the participation of students, staff and community members. The organization was able to raise a little bit over three thousand dollars. VTAC's ASB is also ending the week with hot cocoa and lunch activities to help the VTAC Mighty Wolverines finish strong. Sequoia's culinary arts program prepared an entire Thanksgiving meal for four hundred-plus students and staff prior to the Christmas break. Jovan Noble had their annual trip to Santa Cruz with students, and they had several students that had never been to the beach for an annual trip. Sequoia Soccer continued to compete in their continuation, and that is all I have.
Thank you very much, Cameron, and you've done a great job. I know this is your last meeting, and we want to thank you for joining us. Okay, we'll go on to board member reports, Dr. Vegas.
Thank you, President Gomoyan. With all of you, I was, you know, really happy to have a great time at CSBA, taking workshops, meeting and connecting with other board members across the state and across the Central Valley. So I'm really looking forward to continuing those partnerships. This week, I was actually able to go to El De Monte to visit their esports team, which was really exciting and just really a great time. So a huge shout out to Mr. Marquez and Mr. Abbott there that have just done a phenomenal job with that program. We have some students who are ranked, you know, within the top one to two percent in specific titles. And so that's really amazing. For those of you unfamiliar with esports, it's now officially sanctioned by CIF. And so, you know, there's a possibility of some of these students getting scholarships, which is just phenomenal. So if you haven't had a chance to check it out, I highly encourage you to take a visit. These teachers have done a great job just creating a wonderful environment and community for, you know, students to come together. And honestly, like, some of these communication skills that they're, you know, communicating instantaneously to work as a team on some of these video games, and it's just really great to see. So really proud of that investment that we made as a board to, you know, support these teams, and I look forward to continuing to support them. Today, I had the pleasure of visiting Valley Oak Middle School with Principal Franco, which was great. We got to visit a lot of different classrooms, in particular, Mr., I think his name was Gassetas, in his art classroom, just really great scene and engaged environment with students and really culturally relevant curriculum. I love that in one side of the classroom, they actually built an altar for the Dia de los Muertos. And so students actually came in with photos of their loved ones, art that they created. And one really cool thing that I thought he did was every semester, I think he picks two to three students who have been embodying, you know, Valley Oak values and engagement, respect. And he actually customizes their shoes, which is really cool, and the students really hyped that and they're really into it. So major shout out to a lot of the phenomenal work going on at Valley Oak. And then after that, I was able to visit our adult school with Principal Olson, right? I think is her with us, yes, thank you. And she shared a lot of information with me about the overall structure of our adult school, some of the kind of nuances and funding when it comes to them navigating not only our K through twelve system, but our community, California Community College system as well. Got to see some amazing projects from some of our student welders, this eagle that is just amazing. You you got to check it out, every single piece of it made by the student individually painted, cleaned these roses that they make, and they sell it to Larry Ag Expo. Some of our nursing programs, and so just a lot of great work going on in our adult school. And I look forward to continuing to support all of our schools, but a particular adult school. And yeah, that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eto'o.
So I'll be brief. Just want to say thanks to the superintendent and to staff for providing the orientation activities over the past couple of weeks here. I did have a chance to go to an orientation in San Diego prior to the CSBA conference that was very, very well done. So I've been to a number of those, and that one was particularly good, so thank you, Megan and others for that. The CSP conference was, as Mr. Vegas or Dr. Vegas says, a useful thing to broaden the perspective of what board members see and engage in and to get a little background knowledge on things. And that's useful, all the elements of orientation are useful, because as you come into this particular work, you're handed a two-and-a-half-inch-thick booklet, double-sided, and said, here you go, read it on Friday night and be ready on Monday, or Tuesday. And the board superintendent, or the board president says, hi, did you get it? Good luck as you're going through it, so thanks, Walter. But that's, it's important to come into the work, because the district moves forward at its own very fast pace, and board members need to be ready to adapt to that. I appreciate very much that the things that I've heard leading into my tenure here as a board member and through tonight. and through tonight even, that there is a strategic approach emerging within the district. I will say, having been around for a long time, this district has been its best when there is a strong strategic element, whether it's facilities, or actions, or program, or budget, so that you're ready for things that are going on, and that work is articulated and oriented so that we get the best we can out of everybody who wants to do the best they can for the kids that go to school in the district. I see that starting to emerge. And just finally, what I'm picking up here is that this is a collegial school board that I believe will be very collaborative and is greatly interested in focusing on the interests and needs of kids in the community, and is ready to do great things for the, for Visea. So thank you. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Belt.
Well, I too got to attend this amazing conference that I wasn't too sure what was that going to be. But it was, it was a think tank of all different elements of California's school boards and attorneys were making all over, and many, many workshops. You couldn't, you couldn't take advantage of all of them, too many. But I have a nice notebook full of lots of good ideas that I will try to just introduce slowly that I've learned that I need to be better at listening and moving with intention rather than just, just, I'll let the others who have a lot more energy do that on our board. And I did enjoy our orientation, as Dr. Odo said, it was a really good, and, and Dr. Vegas was with us too, so that we got a really good foundation, well, expectation of the foundation, that we're still developing further about how this all works. But I, I took a little side trip at the end of that day and went to the print shop that I have always heard about the print shop. My wife, I've helped her work through how to order things for the print shop in the past. And I went there to get a jacket that I really liked, and so I bought my first bisalunified apparel. It's not this jacket, but anyway, it's, and was wonderfully given a tour by Nathan Divorce, who, it is absolutely phenomenal what happens in that small space. Millions of pages that are printed for students, teachers, staff, and what they can do. And they gave me quite a, an overview of what can happen if we take advantage of it and how we can save, even though we all like to be digital and less of this, but we still need this. And they're helping us do that at a very efficient level. I look forward to going to the adult school lunch on Thursday to the appreciation and holiday celebration. And all of us are going to be attending Friday night, the adult school graduation, mid-year graduation, which, having worked there and seen what they do and understand what Tammy has a heart to make sure they continue to do, is to celebrate with those adults a milestone. And for us to be there is a, it's an important feature for them to say, "Oh, wow, they even showed up for us."
Thank you, Board Member K Spears Salino.
Yeah, so I almost enjoyed the CSBA concert, but I did find out some interesting things about myself, like I'm allergic to shellfish. And so spent some time in the hospital, unfortunately, on this trip. But I very much look forward to next year. And see how that goes. Anyways, but in reality, I did want to say thank you to Delia and Monica. They really organized everything down to a schedule and, and just was so impressed. And to everyone else who reached out during the conference as well, I'm fine. And then I just wanted to say to everyone, enjoy your winter break. I know that it's always tiring this, this time of year, a couple of days left, and I really hope that our teachers and our administrators, and hopefully some of you in the district office too, get a nice, get a nice holiday break. So enjoy your time with your families.
Thank you, Board Member Neeler.
So I'll just do CSBA, because I do enjoy CSBA. I think it's a great opportunity for the board to get together and learn about each other and try to develop skills to collaborate. And I think that's one of the most important things that is a takeaway. In addition to, they always have this fantastic, phenomenal speaker that always makes me cry every year about, you know, how they, how a teacher made the difference in their life, and it's just all about, that's why we're all here. So I'm not going to get on that soapbox again. But we also were able to steal away a little bit of time to go see the Redwood students in the orchestra and see them play a little bit. So that was a highlight of that trip. Also, the special board meeting, and I love the Student Achievement Awards where we did, we actually recognize all of our athletes, their GPAs, our VAPA, Visual and Performing Arts, and just our student achievements. I loved that night. It is amazing to see the, the students, and one that I remember, and amongst all the great students, was a young man from China who had been here, migrated to this country in 2016, and he is doing, he has a 4.0 and has learned the language and just doing an amazing job. So I'm, it just, it's, our teachers are doing a great job, and Bisalunified is doing a great job. I had the opportunity though today to visit Golden Oak Elementary School with Superintendent Schrum. Very nice visit. The principal, Mrs. Schilling, gave us a tour of a lot of the first, second, third grade classes. Many great things that we saw, good teaching, strategies. Just, I'm gonna give a shout out to, there was a lot of teachers that we saw, but Ms. Ledesma and also Ms. Hodges. Ledesma was doing all the, the kids were all engaged. She was exciting, and they were, kids were excited about learning math. And she introduced it, and she was, "So what are we gonna do today in math?" And the kids were all just like, "Oh, we get to do math." And so it's like, "Oh, my goodness, is that not what we're here for?" So just a great job. And Ms. Hodges reading us a Christmas story to the students and, you know, asking those questions and getting them all excited about, "What are you doing in your home?" And, and just pulling that into that story. But anyway, I just want to also say, please take the time during this three-week holiday break to celebrate and be with your families and take a much-needed rest, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Board Member, or Board Clerk Gabby.
And I only agreed to this because I know you'll never be absent. So that's one requirement there. And when you mentioned math, the entire curriculum department was all a Twitter over there. They're all smiling. So first, before I forget, shout out, Redwood High School Band has a wrapping booth in the Visalia Mall, so no one wants to wrap their own presents, so go support our band. But I think, you know, kind of covered CSBA, and it was a fabulous opportunity just to kind of also come together as a team, and thank you to Delia and Monica. They did beyond like their organization, and it's kind of like herding cats with us, and so they are amazing. Got to visit with Superintendent Schrum Charter Homeschools and Principal Moore there. It's, when you talk about being student-centered, they really are personalizing what they do for each student, and even interventions, and how they structure that, and what kind of electives, and even to the point of when they come to, she really sits down with them to decide, "Is this the right place for you?" It'd be very easy to just enroll every student that, that walks through the door, but really that focus on, you know, is this the right place for you? Is something else an option, you know, you know, kind of the, the online school or things like that, but just really so student-focused. It was, it was a great visit. And I'm trying to think of other things that haven't been mentioned. Also, adult school, shout out to LVN pinning tomorrow night. They do just some great work with getting students really in a career and changing their kind of life path to something that can really support their family in that position as an LVN. I know many of them, they have such an outstanding program. Many of them have jobs before they're even graduating. And that speaks to the, the reputation of our adult school. So awesome job. And with that, yes, staff and students, I know you've worked hard up until this, and, you know, enjoy your winter break, and I think that's it.
Thank you. I was able, I was able to go to the Viva Blunt Literacy Night, and that was a lot of fun, just the different activities that had to do with reading and spelling and, and writing. And I saw a really cute Reader's Theater that I'm hoping is gonna come over here one night and do their little, their little theater on camping. CSBA was very good. It was a good bonding time. Not only do I like these people, they're fun. So we, we really had a good time. Also went to Gosin, their winter program this week. I usually try to check my calendar the night before, but I got up at 8:00 and I checked it, and I thought, "Oh, no, I gotta be there at 8:30," and I made it. So, yeah, it was just really sweet, and what I love most of all, I just like to pictures of the crowd. There were 400 parents there. It was pretty amazing. Yeah, you know, parents, parents want their kids to be successful. It was just amazing to see. I'm very excited to be able to serve this community another four years. I think this district is going in a, in a great direction, and I'm, I'm just excited what's gonna transpire the next four years of my term. So just want to thank my constituents for giving me a chance to serve them again for another four years.
Thank you, and again, congratulations to our new and returning board members. We had a great swearing-in ceremony and reception earlier today at 5:00 along with our organizational meeting. Also, congratulations to our new board officers, our clerk and president. It's going to be an honor and a pleasure to serve alongside you and your leadership, and that leadership of the board as a whole. And so I'm simply gonna say tonight, a thank you to our staff, a thank you to our parents, our students, our community. It's hard to believe, I mean, we're already here in December. We're about to go on break, well-deserved for all of those groups. And I just hope that everyone takes some time to enjoy family or be alone, whatever you need to do, right, to recharge over the break, and enjoy the holiday season and the traditions that are unique to you and your family. And I know I'm looking forward to spending some time with mine as well. So thank you all for your hard work this semester. We have a lot that's going on. And as we work to align those arrows, sometimes that's easy, sometimes it's hard, right? But we always have to remember that it's, it's student learning, and it's for our students that we do that work. So when it is hard, when it is long, when we do want to throw our hands up sometimes, we have to remember that there are 32,000 faces staring up at us every day that are dependent upon what we do and the leadership that this board provides. And so that motivates me to wake up every morning. It motivates me to come to work and do this work. And I know that many of you have that same motivation. So take this holiday break, rest, recharge, because we're gonna hit it hard come January. So hope everyone has a great break.
Thank you. Like to move on to our recommended expulsions. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
I'll second, and also I was wondering, I didn't see a staff dismissal on this agenda. Okay, got it. Thank you. I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Board Member K Spears Salino, second by Board Member Vegas, all in favor.
Student Board Representative abstains, and motion passes unanimously.
Recommended reinstatements. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Board Member K Spears Salino, second by Board Member Neeler, all in favor.
Student Board Representative abstains, and motion passes unanimously.
Recommended review continued expulsion. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by Board Member K Spears Salino, second by Dr. Odo, all in favor.
Student Board Representative abstains, and motion passes unanimously.
And we're gonna move on to Navigate 360 Alice Active Shooter Response Training Update and Schedule. Mr. Demeo.
Thank you, President Gamoyen, Superintendent Schrum, board members, and colleagues. I'm here tonight, as I told you I would be, on some next steps for the Alice 360 Active Shooter Training. Mr. Schrum alluded to it a little bit earlier. We've completed a few of these initial steps, and I just wanted to let you know where we are, and also ask for your consideration on an action item we're gonna need to consider for the next step. So just as a quick reminder, as you know, Educational Services really focuses on lots of different things. Primarily tonight, we're gonna be talking about that safety aspect. As much as we know, our families want the best for their students. They also want them to come to school in a safe place. So this initiative is helping to make sure that we do just that. As we talked before, the Alice campaign is a training opportunity that will allow us to ensure that all the members of our staff know what to do in the roles that they serve, regardless whether they're at a school site, or at a district office, or frankly, anywhere downtown. And we really felt that this is a great way to kind of show people what they do, give them that confidence they're gonna need, just in case an emergency were to happen. So as we talked before, there were two steps to this process. The first step saw all of our district managers, our site leaders, and our department heads go through the initial training. And our very own Mr. Harmio, and I think Luis is back there, Luis Harmio, our Director of Safety, and also our, one of our wonderful YSO officers, Officer Avila, who's with us tonight, put us through the training the last few days. Again, as Mr. Schrum said, it's intense. It was a tough session to go through, but I think we all went away knowing a little bit more about what to do and have a greater sense of confidence. More specifically, we know what to anticipate when our staff goes through the training in the January timeframe. So that first step is done. We had a wonderful partnership established with the City of Visalia, both with the city, the fire, and the police department. Mr. Harmio worked very hard with them to allow us to use their spaces. They graciously gave us the space for this training, and also when we train half of our staff free of cost, free of charge, because again, they see the value in what we're doing, taking care of the kids in the community. So, Mr. Harmio, thank you for that. The next step is what I wanted to talk to you all about tonight. As we've mentioned before, in order to get all 5,000 of our employees trained, we've got to be creative. We know we need to do this on our school sites, but we need to do it at a time when our students are not in session. So tonight, I'm going to be asking you to consider allowing us to go to a minimum day schedule for each of our schools to have one minimum day so that we can conduct the training on that off time. So what that's gonna look like is every feeder system will have the same day. So a family that has a child in elementary, middle, and high school will just have one day, a minor inconvenience where their students are gonna come home a little bit early. Our staff will stay and get their training done. I want you to know, though, just like any other minimum day that we have, our students that are in the after-school programs will get to start their after-school sessions a little bit earlier. They will also be served lunch on those days, as of course will our staff as well. So again, we'll have an AM session in the morning. That, those sessions will be for our non-site-based people, and those are those partnerships Luis set up for us in different places across the city where trainings will be taking place over that two-week period. So this is the schedule that we've been talking about. So as you can see, it's color-coded based on the feeder system. So we've let our school site principals know what I'm going to be asking you to consider tonight so that they can start thinking and planning about that. Once we get your go-ahead, I will also be communicating with our community so that they also can start preparing for this one day coming up when they're know, that they know their children will be on a minimum day schedule. So the next steps, so once we get to this point, the next steps that are coming up is again, that communication piece that's going to be huge. This is a huge initiative for us. We really want to make sure it goes off smoothly because it's super important, and we want to make sure our community understands exactly what this is looking like. I also want you to know that even though we've had training that took place initially, it's not a one-and-done type of thing, right? While it is akin to riding a bike-type thing, you don't forget things. We want to make sure of that. And we know that things and protocols change. So this is going to become a regular part of the training process that we use for our school system, not to mention making sure all of our new employees are going to be trained as well. Mr. Harmio and several other colleagues are licensed and trained to be able to provide this training for us, so they'll be doing more of that in the future. And of course, the student component. What is the experience gonna be like for our students? The next time I come back to, I'll be sharing that with you, so you will know what to anticipate. And again, those things will all be communicated out to our families as well. So with that said, what I'm asking you to approve tonight for your consideration is just the notion that we want to go on this minimum day schedule idea. My colleague, Mr. Dylan, will be coming up in just a little bit to talk specifically about modifying the calendar. My colleague, Mr. Dylan, will be coming up in just a little bit to talk specifically about modifying the calendar. But for now, I just need your approval to move ahead with the idea of putting our schools on a minimum day for those one days. And of course, if you have any questions, I can answer those as well.
Any questions or comments?
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Who's second? Mr. Belt, okay. Motion by Dr. Viegas, second by Mr. Belt, all in favor.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Revision of the twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar, Mr. Dylan.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Gomoyan, Superintendent Schrum, members of the board. Sorry for the non-jacketing, it got real hot in here, so I just kind of rolled up the sleeves and drinking coffee. I was just like, all right, so, um, I, I want to, so Mr. Demeo just mentioned, the, the intent of, of this item is to bring back revision to the current twenty-two, twenty-three school year calendar to reflect the changes in light of the addition of the minimum days to support the Alice training facilitation, as well as to incorporate the holiday Juneteenth that would be reflected in our calendar on June nineteenth this year and going forward. So one thing I do want to say is to make that happen, there were a lot of things that took place, lots of people involved. I want to thank Greg Price and VUTA, I want to thank Andrew Sanchez, Kristi Mayberry and CSEA for their partnership. There's MOUs and other things, lots of working through details, lots of behind-the-scenes stuff. And I know it just demonstrates our collective commitment to the safety and well-being of our students, our staff and our families. And so with that, I bring forward to you this recommendation to revise a current, current school year calendar to reflect both of those adjustments.
I motion to approve.
Quick, quick question, I'm sorry. So are we adding a minimum day or switching one out?
So what we're doing is for the, specifically for Alice, is that what you're talking about? So what we're doing is we are adding six minimum days, Tuesday through Thursday. Andy, correct me if I'm wrong here, the first week of, or the last week of January, the first week of February. And each feeder track, and there's a couple others, because we know we have staff in other areas that don't necessarily fit cleanly into a feeder track, would have minimum, those schools that have one minimum day. So all the schools in the Golden West feeder track have a minimum day. I'm going to say hypothetically that Tuesday and then moving forward. We, so they are additional minimum days, correct? We're not moving them, they're additional minimum days. And we do, Nathan was very helpful in helping us make sure we look at instructional minutes, all of those pieces, I know where you're going.
That was my question.
To make sure that we had, we were, we were in compliance, that we were still providing the quality of education and learning for our kids.
Okay, we have a motion by Board Member Casebeers Saleno, I need a second.
I'll second.
Second by Board Member Gaby, all in favor.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
Now we are going to the twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar, second and final read.
I hope you like looking at me because it's going to be a couple more here, I'm going to stand in here. So forty-seven, enclosure forty-seven, what you're looking at is the second read on the twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar. If you recall, we brought this to you back a month, about a month and a half, two months ago, with the addition of obviously the, the Juneteenth holiday we mentioned, as well as a couple other things. We have a, a committee that comes together and puts these calendars in place. We try to stay far out ahead with the sort of nuances of COVID and different kind of unique situations the last couple of years. We're trying to kind of catch back up with that. So as you know, I'll be bringing this calendar and then the following school year. But again, Greg, Alice Gluckman, others who participate on that committee really kind of help look at this closely, scrutinize dates. We're reflecting on lots of different things. And so this is a joint effort to put this together and bring back to you for a second and final reading here and request your vote to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar.
Any questions before? Okay. Motion by Board Member Naylor.
I'll second.
Second by Casebeers Saleno, all in favor.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
Twenty-four, twenty-five school year calendar, second and final read.
Very similar to what I just shared with you. This is a very similar, except we are looking out, again, this kind of, just so you have clarity for past practice, this brings us up to speed to have two years out set in place. So you can understand this helps with planning, not only for staff, but also for families and other folks in the community so that they can kind of foresee the next coming school years.
Questions, comments, motion?
Motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar.
Motion by Board Member Naylor, second by Casebeers Saleno, all in favor.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
It's favorite, twenty-two, twenty-three, VUSD First Interim Financial Report.
I heard somebody say it was their favorite. Good evening, President Gomoyan, members of the board, Superintendent Schrum, Nathan Hernandez, Business Services, and we are going to present the First Interim Financial Report. Apologies, Dr. Odo, that, that three-inch page book, three-inch book in front of you, about two and a half of that is our budget report. So we can thank Mrs. Villarreal and her team for, for preparing that. But that is our first interim report, it's about a two-hundred-page report in there, so I'm going to summarize it here. Try to do this as quickly as possible. This, the, the budget report ties the, the board's beliefs and commitments to expenditures, dollars, resources that we allocate towards, towards our budget. And so that's what drives the budget report. On the purpose of the report, the first interim is all expenditures from July one through October thirty-first. So this shares the actuals and compares what's changed from adopted budget to our current budget. It's submitted to TCOE and filed, filed with the state and it shows, shares the certification of the district's budget. And so we have a positive certification, which means that we are able to meet our minimum reserve requirement of three percent. We're also able to show in our multi-year projection or MYP that we can meet all of our expenditures for the next two fiscal years. And so we'll go through and highlight some of the major changes and adjustments. We'll concentrate on general fund because that's where most of our expenditures lie, as well as look at how we've spent some of our one-time funds and, and what we still have remaining. Again, we'll look at that multi-year projection in the general fund and then we'll talk about some things moving forward. And so we are here on this chart in December. This is our, our, kind of our budget timeline and calendar. It is a circle because we are always working in multiple years. We are working, in fact, by Thursday, we'll have our finalized audit report for last fiscal year. We're working on our first interim report tonight. And then in just a few short weeks, we'll get the governor's January budget proposal for twenty-three, twenty-four. So always working in, in multiple years, but tonight we are presenting the first interim report. And this is kind of the high level of our general fund. So this chart here, under the adopted budget, shows where we were on June thirtieth and in the district's adopted budget. And next to that is our first interim amount. So you see there's a very large variance between where we were then and now. And the, the numbers on the left of the chart show what some of those major changes were. So in the LCFF, our Local Control Funding Formula, we had some changes after we adopted our budget to the state adopted budget that resulted in about a twenty-seven million dollar increase in funding there. On federal funds, about eighty million in the ESER funds, stimulus funds that were carried over. So not necessarily new monies this year, but carried over from prior years. And then about eighty-two million, which a lot of that is new money, is in state funds and that was for our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. And then two one-time block grants that we received for arts and music, about sixteen million dollars and another forty million dollars in learning recovery block grant funds, which we'll talk a little bit more here in a few seconds. So in the chart, it shows the variance about a close to two, two-hundred-million-dollar swing, which is a large amount in our, in our budget, but a lot of that is based off of one-time dollars. So again, high-level total district general fund revenues, three-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars in LCFF sources. So in the chart, the biggest piece of that is the LCFF, which includes funding that we get from the state. It includes property taxes, it includes the education protection account or the Prop thirty and fifty-five funds. So all of that makes up our LCFF and then the other amounts there for federal, other state and local funds. On the expenditure side, you see the amounts, the probably the larger buckets there are certificated classified salaries and associated benefits. Because we have a lot of carryover, normally this is about eighty percent of our budget. What we're showing here, it's about sixty-five percent of our budget. Again, a lot of carryover for things like facilities and HVAC projects, as well as services and supplies. So we pay most attention to the unrestricted side of the budget. So we have an unrestricted and restricted side. The unrestricted side is where most of our staff is paid from about eighty percent, ninety percent of our unrest, of our general fund budget is typically on the unrestricted side. And so you can see again, the variance column here on the right from where we were at budget adoption and some of those major changes here on the left, again, the LCFF negotiated agreements with our employee groups, the one-time off-salary schedule payment, as well as carryover. And carryover again is taking funds that were received in a prior year, bringing them forward to be allocated and spent in the current year. And so what this shows here at the bottom, surplus deficit, is that first interim, we do show that we have a deficit. And I'll show you on the next slide why that is primarily from carryover funds and what our actual surplus is for the current year. And so when we look at our operational budget, our ongoing budget, about three-hundred-and-eight-million dollars in revenue, but about two-hundred-and-ninety-five-million dollars in expenses. Again, when we pull out those one-time costs for either the, through negotiations or from carryover and, and projects, the total about thirty-four-million dollars. So that reduces that deficit down to about a thirteen-million-dollar surplus in the current year on the operational budget side. So one-time funds, we received this, this is not just current year, this goes back to prior fiscal years as well, but through the CARES Act and through ESER funds and all of the different stimulus programs that the federal government issued, as well as some one-time funds from the state, Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant, not the program, the Learning Recovery Block Grant, about a hundred-and-seventy-five-million total in one-time funds. We spent about eighty-five-million dollars to date and there's about eighty-nine or so remaining. Some of those funds have to be spent by the end of next year. And we look at ESER two has to be spent by September of end of next year and about sixty-four-million to be spent by September of twenty-twenty-four. That's the remaining ESER three funds, as well as the expanded or the Learning Recovery Block Grant. We have these funds earmarked, not necessarily all spent, but earmarked towards programs, facilities and other projects. Looking at our multi-year projection, the general fund unrestricted, again, you see, we talked about the, the deficit in the current year, but is, is really operationally a surplus. And so when we look at the next two years, we do show surplus. Again, we'll have better projections in January when the state issues its initial proposal for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget year. These are projections based on what we have in expenditures now, anticipated cost increases for step and column and those kind of things, and anticipated cost of living adjustment from the state. Looking forward, as I mentioned, we'll get a proposal from, from the governor for the state in, on the, by the tenth of January. We expect that to have about five-million dollars in new arts and music funding from Proposition twenty-eight that was approved last month. The Legislative Analyst Office usually sends out some projections around this year of what they expect the next year's budget to look like. They are projecting a deficit overall in the state budget of about twenty-four billion. And, you know, through the magic of state, state funding, the Proposition ninety-eight side of the budget, which is education, is not expecting to experience a cut for next year. That's primarily due to, to three things. One is the state put a lot of money in expenditures as one-time expenditures. And so when they remove all those one-time expenditures, they're still able to provide us with ongoing funds. There's been some decline in enrollment. We've experienced some decline in our district as well, but statewide, there's a, there's a larger decline. So there's less money that the state has to send out. And then Proposition two, which created the Prop ninety-eight reserve, requires that when Prop ninety-eight is reduced, that they pull money out of reserve to kind of bring Prop ninety-eight back to what it was in the previous year. So those three things are going to keep schools whole for next year and possibly even provide a cost of living adjustment, a COLA. So again, we'll know more when the state issues its budget. We do still have, as I mentioned, some decline enrollment, we're really flat. It's not, the decline is very small, but we're really flat, but we're still down from where we were in twenty nineteen, twenty, by about four or five hundred students. So we are seeing trend, which shows year-over-year growth by grade levels. And so that's influx of people moving into, into Isalia, but, but we are still down from nineteen twenty. And then again, trying to sustain a lot of the programs that we've put in place with one-time funding. We know we have one-time funds that will bring us through another four or five years, but we do need to start building out that plan for how we're going to do this long-term. And with that, we'll turn it over to any questions.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Belt?
Uh, on slide twelve, Nathan, I should have probably asked this earlier. It looks to me like we had just books and supplies, a large outgo this year, where normally it's going to be like seven-point-two and seven-point-two for the next two years. Was that just a, an influx of something unusual?
Yeah, so a lot of times when we have carryover, a lot of that happens. I think about a lot of, there's a lot of library materials and things that we, that we're purchasing this year that were carried over from prior years. So a lot of times, carryover will be pushed into materials and supplies. But when we look at building out our, our next year's budgets, we don't include that carryover. So when we looked at our budget adoption for this year, it was probably closer to seven million. Posting carryover, it grew to the twenty-four million.
Very good, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Can I have a motion to approve the First Interim Financial Report?
I'll.
Second.
Okay, motion by Board Member Odo, second by Board Member Naylor, all in favor.
Good report, thank you.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
Sorry about that. The intent to employ certificated personnel and approval of provisional internship permits, Mr. Dylan.
All right. So bringing back to you a couple different items here. The first one is to move forward with a provisional internship permit, otherwise known as a PIP. And so we've done this other times, just kind of brief rationale for all four of these items, just as a reminder, especially as we knew, have new board members, that oftentimes, the further we get into the school year, the harder it is to identify available staff, right? Who aren't under contract, who are available to step into vacant positions. And so at times, in each of these situations, we're bringing forward for your approval because we've sought out and we've recruited for fully credentialed individuals. And for these positions, some of them are hard-to-fill positions, some of it just has to do with the time period of the year. But requesting your authorization to approve waivers or provisional permits to employ individuals who need that additional time or, or opportunities, coursework, passage of exams in order to move forward with their credential status and, and be employed currently. So this one specifically, provisional internship permit to approve for an individual moving forward into one of our education specialist positions.
Any questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Board Member Naylor, second by Casebeers Saleno, all in favor.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
Notice of intent to employ certificated personnel and approval of variable term waiver request for CCSD certif- certification.
Good job, that's a mouthful, well done. Again, so this is a variable term waiver request, hard-to-fill position and requesting your approval to move forward with this individual so that they have some additional time to move forward with those credential requirements in the meantime.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Board Member Casebeers Saleno, second by Board Member Odo, all in favor.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
Notice of intent to employ certificated personnel approval administrative services credential waiver request, Mr. Dylan.
Again, this is a waiver request for an administrative services credential, similarly recruiting to fill a position that we have vacant right. to fill a position that we have vacant right now. Want to make sure we have adequate support at our elementary school here.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by board member, Naylor, second by Casebeers Salena. All in favor?
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
Notice, notice of intent to employ certificated personnel approval of variable term waiver request for speech language pathologists, Mr. Dylan.
There you go. Last one of the evening, requesting your approval to move forward with this waiver as well.
Motion.
A motion.
Oh, so Mr. Vegas.
I'll second.
Second by board member, Gabby. All in favor? Motion.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
Warrant list, Mr. Hernandez.
Good evening, President Gomoyan. This is our routine action item to approve the warrant list for November fourth through November eighteenth of twenty-twenty-two.
Motion.
All motion.
Second.
Okay, that's like a race. Motion by board member, Gabby, second by a board member, Odo. All in favor? Oh, we got it all.
I thought I was going to get to call something different. All right, Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
Board policy revision, adoption, deletions, first read, Superintendent Schrum.
Thank you, Board President. Board, this is just the first read of board revisions. This is a review of policy that occurs every year, that has been shared with you and also is in your packet. Majority of these changes are conforming changes, as in CSBA recommendations, changes to our policy due to either new laws or policies that have been adopted at the state level. And so this is just first read. Again, please be sure to review those in your packet, and then we'll bring second read and approval in January.
Questions, comments?
Just want to say, I appreciate all the work of our cabinet members in these executive policy meetings.
Yep.
Breaking down, going down through each one. So just deep appreciation to our staff.
And nice job, President Gomoyan.
And clerk, and clerk Gabby.
Yeah. Meeting adjourned.